All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call.
McKnight. Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, I may ask that there be a amendment under item 8B. It is listed as a resolution for the authorization of signatures of the Massalina credit note that is in fact the ordinance for the approval of the guarantee of the note.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second. Discussion?
The item has been advertised in the Meadville Tribune. Ran Friday, the second advertisement will run tomorrow. So proper notice hasn't been given.
Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Public comment on the agenda items?
Yes, we have Jason Ramsey.
I promise I'll be brief, mostly because normally I have a chance to write what I'm going to say before the debate gets talked about. Since this is before the agenda, I have to do this off the top of my head. I just wanted to note that the Meadville Planning Commission's letter about the Housing Action Plan that I think you're going to be discussing today, I don't want to steal the thunder from any of that in the discussion. I just kind of wanted to add a little bit of character and context from the conversation that happened at the Planning Commission that we recognize that city resources are in. We're going to be asking for some, I guess, not that authority isn't the right word, but kind of some room to explore and consider options and try to act and have some capacity to put some things forward. And so we're kind of looking for support, but I wanted to recognize that we're not kind of expecting some sort of like massive amount of resources to come down from the city and wave magic wands and make all these amazing things happen. And that we're very respectful of what the city's doing. So that's just the context I wanted to add before we get to the letters. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. That is all, Mayor. Sorry. Notice of executive session meetings.
We held an executive session this evening at 5:00 for the purpose of real estate and personnel.
Approval of minutes, September 16th, 2025, regular meeting.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Vogel.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Communications.
There are two letters in your council packets, both from the City Planning Commission. One in regards to the parking garage and the other in regards to what Jason referenced and the Housing Action Plan.
I know this isn't maybe our communications policy, but the upshot is that the Planning Commission is making a recommendation that we sell the parking garage and gave us some guiding principles to view. Because I think we like didn't exactly address that last time. We like talked around it. And so now we have the letter and that is the recommendation. And then the, Jason spoke to the Housing Action Plan letter as well. But I think the people are interested in maybe where the Planning Commission has fallen on the garage. So I just.
I wasn't sure if, I know you summarized that. Did we want to read either of those or? The only reason I say this is because Jason stood up and he gave us some context and maybe nobody knows what that is. Is if I'm asking council if they want those read or if it's okay just to move on. I just didn't want to.
I think we read them.
Okay.
I say.
I got an idea. Jim.
I'll just be contrary and say they are on file and available for inspection.
All right.
Do you want me to read them?
Yeah, I mean, you can. I was just going to ask if somebody wanted to read them or if you want me to read them. Thanks, Mary Ann. I appreciate it.
So this is the one in regards to the parking garage. Dear Mayor Kinder and Meadville City Council, I'm writing today on behalf of the Meadville Planning Commission. We have reviewed information regarding potential courses of action regarding the parking garage and provided City Planner Peter Grella with our responsive response via executive session. However, we felt it was important to provide a framework through which we arrived at our response that we would hope is applied to deliberations at the city, at the council level. This information, this framework is made up of three guiding principles that informed our response. One, parking is not an attraction to people who want to live, work, and play in the city. Affordable and safe housing, tourism, and compelling places of commerce and work are. Two, monetary investment of taxpayer dollars, taxpayer dollars by the city and secondary services like parking should be minimized whenever possible to protect our resources. Three, long-term city viability must be prioritized over short-term needs. Thank you for your work on solving the deferred maintenance issue for the city. Second letter, this is in regards to the Housing Action Plan. Dear Mayor Kinder and Meadville City Council, I'm writing today on behalf of the Meadville Planning Commission. We seek your approval to pursue the actions we believe are necessary to achieve the goals named in Make Meadville Home, City of Meadville Housing Action Plan 2024. As you know, the Housing Action Plan set forward three goals. One, increase quality and availability of affordable housing in Meadville by 50 units, prioritizing redevelopment areas and deteriorated areas. Two, increase the rate of homeownership in Meadville to 40% higher. Three, increase supportive housing opportunities for populations with specialized care needs. At present, the Housing Action Plan under roles and responsibilities identifies City of Meadville as coordinating entity and redevelopment authority as operational lead entity. The Meadville Planning Commission would like to increase the capacity of these entities in the following ways. For the City of Meadville, assisting in managing key stakeholders such as local business owners, homeowners, Crawford County Planning Office, and housing developers, dedicate planning staff and MPC volunteer capacity to managing the housing partnership. For the Meadville Redevelopment Authority, explore other tools for redevelopment such as Citywide or Countywide Land Bank. Provide the RDA with property priorities for acquisition, demolition, construction, and/or rehabilitation of housing units. This increased capacity provided by the MPC is absolutely essential in meeting the timeline put forth in the Housing Action Plan where residents are moving into 50 new units in the City of Meadville by 2026, 2027. The Meadville Planning Commission recognizes that affordable and safe housing are an attraction for people who want to live, work, and play in the City of Meadville. With your permission, we want to be part of this solution.
Thank you, Mary Ann, for bearing with me because I kept those words for.
And if you'd allow me a brief interjection as well, because I oversee a lot of the Planning Commission as its liaison to you. Both of these come out of a specific request from me. The letter from the City Planning Commission is pursuant to one of the clear roles that the MPC, the municipality's planning code, gives to the Planning Commission to make recommendations on city actions when it relates to the sale, demolition, and closure of streets, watercourses, and other public facilities. So the Planning Commission has met its duty there. The second one is to also take seriously that the Planning Commission, as an agency of the city, moves at council's priorities. And so this letter satisfies that they are asking you to approve of their activities in a way. And so to keep you informed so that they are not acting out in the public without your knowledge and your permission. So I said, proper way to do it is communicate with council. You can rely on through that, through me, but practice with communications like this. And what you do with this at the request to give them permission is now to you.
Can we discuss this later in the agenda, right? There's discussion.
It's just communication right now.
Yeah.
But discussion of, they're on new business, just Planning Commission and Housing Action Plan.
Got it. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it. All right. Thank you. Thank you again for bearing with me on that. Manager's report.
Two items. The first is that the Shady Brook cameras will be up in two weeks. So we'll have new surveillance cameras in Shady Brook. That was the final portion of our PCCD grant through the Police Department. So those will be installed. And then as a reminder, the November 4th meeting is canceled.
Great.
Wanted to make a comment with respect to the parking garage, and that is we've come to an agreement in principle regarding the sale of the garage and the redevelopment of that garage. You should be looking forward to seeing that on your agenda at the earliest of November 18th. So there will be public discussion and consideration of those agreements at that time.
Which is our next meeting.
Which is the next scheduled meeting, because November 4th was canceled. Yes.
Thanks, Tim. Old Business Ordinance, third and final reading, Amendment to Fire Pension Ordinance. Can I have a motion?
No.
What am I looking at here?
Did I give you the wrong?
Yeah, I got the wrong. That's okay. Do I have? Okay, got it. Okay. How did I make it this far?
That's pretty basic at the beginning, so you're fine.
Yeah, really.
My apologies, Mayor.
No, 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 that's okay. Okay, Old Business. Discussion zoning ordinance, amend, amending off-street parking requirements.
Thank you, council, for humoring me with this. Again, there are several outstanding discussions with the city's zoning ordinance that I have not personally had a chance to talk with you since it was last passed and since we inherited the consultant's draft back in 2022. Let it be known that this has nothing to do actually with the parking garage or anything. This is merely zoning. So there's been, let's see, a reconsideration in the planning profession about the wisdom of planners like me determining how many parking spaces, any particular use, should be required to construct or should be required to provide for their property. That's my interpretation is that implies, applies not only to new construction, but to the reuse of old structures. We have a lot of reuse of old structures which may not strictly need or the parking spaces that our zoning ordinance would otherwise require. We were pretty radical in, thanks again. We were pretty radical in passing the zoning ordinance by removing parking minimums for commercial uses and trusting that the commercial business knows exactly how many parking spaces they would want to provide on their own lot for their own profitability. We had still required at least one part off-street parking space for residential units, and we had not addressed whether that was still wise, especially given that in downtown apartments, areas that could have been redeveloped as apartments or as offices may not be redevelopable as apartments if we strictly held to our requirement for one off-street parking space in the zoning ordinance. And so I genuinely like to know your values, what you feel about that, and take that into consideration, and even if this is something that you do not wish to consider at this time.
Yeah. Would you take it?
In what terms? I'm not, I'm not really in favor of the ordinance as presented. I would take a little different viewpoint. First of all, social psychologists would tell you that what people want are houses that conform to 21st century living and have adequate space for recreation. Sociologists and law enforcement people would tell you that parking is an issue and sometimes actually leads to, shall we say, somewhat violent confrontations. And in terms of living downtown, if I were going to live downtown and I couldn't find a place to park, I would choose not to live downtown. I mean, the whole thing about this parking garage is that we had residents of the Kepler Project saying, where are we going to park? And now we're saying, oh, we don't have to worry about where we're parking. We're not being consistent in this.
Yeah, I think my understanding is that this gives the decision-making to the person who's developing the housing, right? So people can still make the choice to provide parking. They can build a lot, they can pave a lot and see that added value, but it's not a requirement. So the city's taking away the red tape that says you actually have to do this because there are plenty of people who live downtown that do not have cars. And that's part of the appeal of living downtown is that they can walk to the things that they need. So it is silly and wasteful to require that developers build parking spaces for people who don't have cars. If people have cars, right, there's ways to meet those needs to lease a spot somewhere else. Good that we're removing this red tape and that we're allowing some flexibility for developers and for folks who do want to live downtown and have different needs. So again, I'm for it, just giving more context as to why.
Yep. For my part, again, I present this to you as an example for discussion. It doesn't necessarily have to be a strict proposal for an amendment, but a premise that I, for you to consider. Because the, what you're talking about, Jim, and what you're talking about, Autumn, are both very, very legitimate. The balance of values is ambiguous, and that's why I present it to you, because it's not something that should be solved by one person, me. So.
Gretchen, Jeopardy, sorry, I started interrupting.
No, please, that's fine.
I guess I would, in thinking about what you're both saying, I guess I was thinking about the city. And if we were to do like a development and part of a housing plan, that we would want to wait, like, do we need parking? Like we, you know, a lot that would put a requirement and an ordinance on the city. But I do, I tend to lean more towards Autumn in terms of, because I do know a lot of people that don't have cars that live downtown for that reason, and they, yeah, so.
One of the problems when you are trying to be specific, I'm looking at page three, item F4. Now again, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of a real estate appraiser and retired broker. And you talk about residential driveways shall lead either to an attached garage or to parking at the side at the rear of the building. That sounds innocuous enough, except in the real world, an attached garage is just that it's attached. If I have, like I do have, a basement garage, that does not qualify as an attached garage. Or if you had a built-in garage, which is yet a separate thing. So in your quest to be specific, you're creating problems that need not exist.
That's actually, that's a good point. That's something that I also see in other places in this ordinance where in trying to be more specific, by doing so, it ends up in gaps in interpretation. Whereas it's something, then again, the zoning officer and the zoning hearing board, rather than an appraiser, would be the one interpreting this ordinance for our purposes, but that's.
I think when we talked about college or cottage court developments, we also mentioned parking requirements. So are we going to demand them in a cottage court development and then say, oh, wait, forget, forget it? Just look at this section of the zoning ordinance we changed.
So even, good point. Even if we remove a blanket requirement for all uses, there are, can still be specific requirement for specific uses. I do agree that I would like to go back into the cottage court to see whether that is the case, but I'll make a note of that.
Okay.
Yep. If anybody appreciates consistency, it's me.
Does anybody have any other questions for Peter on the off-street parking?
Well, if there's no more public discussion like they have about this, individually, feel welcome to send me all the questions that you have. I'll do my best to entertain them from all perspectives that I can think of.
Thank you, Peter. Discussion zoning ordinance, various amendments to zoning map.
Okay, just to keep this concise and on topic, the only thing I'm presenting to you today is that the National Historic Register of Downtown Meadville Historic District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places since 1984, is referenced a couple times in our zoning ordinance with respect to cellular towers and signage provisions, but it does not show up on our zoning map right now. So for clarity, to actually know where the historic district lies for regulatory purposes seems to be cheap and simple and wise. I'm also trying to respect that in the original 2022 draft of the zoning ordinance, there are a number of more provisions related to form-based treatment of buildings, aesthetic treatment of buildings converted to other uses, and respect for the aesthetic treatment of historic places. So while we had found that the form-based stuff was very difficult to apply, there is a pretty robust practice of protecting for historic resources. There's specific, like historic districts. We never really settled the discussion of how important our historic district should play in regulating in land use regulations. So again, just a premise for our discussion so we can get to some sort of resolution, whether to pursue anything more or not, or how far we can go with that.
Does this change, is this a red outline that we currently have? Or is that what the proposed change would be?
That is our current historic district, yes. With the caveat, there were two exhibits attached to the National Register application, one which was a little bit more hand-drawn, another one which was more extensive and included all of the middle school around the diamond and all of the library. So I'm using that one.
And the overlay isn't on the current, correct? This would be.
It is not currently shown, no. It's only, it's only referenced that we have a historic district. You cannot have colorful electronic signs in. So the way this can go, you can, you can have increased zoning regulations, decreased zoning regulations, altered regulations that try to respect the historic nature of this district specifically. Again, the balance of values, depending on how far you want to take that. It's just a conversation I recall we did not complete.
I seem to recall that when the academy got rid of its old marquee and wanted to put a new one in, that they had a problem because it was a historic district. Even though the building itself was historic and you wanted to kind of keep it that way, we had to go through a procedure.
Right. Yes, only within the historic district and not even other places. And you see, we have a prohibition on electronic signs that are basically like tri-color LEDs that have a movable screen. So that might have been the issue that they encountered. And I don't know how that was resolved. I know they have a static marquee displays now.
That's how that was resolved.
And only with the decorative moving lights, but.
So both the academy and the credit union too?
Yes.
I was just going to say, you're not proposing anything new. This is just identifying where the district is on the zoning map to make it clearer for homeowners and others.
That's right.
So there's nothing new. It's just putting it on the map because it wasn't there before, but it already exists. And then you can make decisions if you want to do more with it later, from a policy.
I'm just letting you know that by putting the historic district on the map, it allows you to make these other decisions.
I'm in favor of putting it on the map, including it in, I would imagine we're going to, to institute some of these other things, we would update our zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And just kind of including it in that omnibus of updates. I'm not particularly motivated to like make any changes to the district as it exists right now.
That's very helpful for me to know.
Unless we start hearing these from people that there's reason to make changes, but. Do you have any thoughts, Gretchen?
I just think it'd be great to do the overlay. I think it's really helpful.
I agree.
Smart thing.
Anecdotally, despite the signs that we have downtown that we, you know, pay for, that are pretty much at inside and at the perimeter of the historic district, many people aren't aware, we have a historic, National Historic Downtown District that's on the National Register of Historic Places. So I'm just kind of cool.
Now everyone who reads the zoning ordinance will know.
Yeah.
So just do wait.
Hundreds.
Hundreds of people.
Sorry, I meant hundreds of persons.
Tens of people.
Do you know, Peter, by that little cut of mulberry to walnut, is it, is it just kind of not? I'm just curious if there is a reason about just that little cut out there. Because it seems like a, except for that.
I think because maybe at the time that was simply a parking lot. So there wasn't any contributing buildings that they were able to cite on that half block. I don't know. I don't know.
Oh, that probably, okay, that's the apartment there, that's where.
So the town.
The town, okay. Okay, now that would make sense then, yeah. Gotcha. That makes sense.
All right.
Discussion zoning ordinance, amending uses to allow pet daycare.
So again, bringing this up, we did have some public who were interested in establishing a new pet daycare, looking back in our table of uses in the zoning ordinance and how, again, as Jim pointed out, in trying to be specific, how many gaps you can introduce. We did not make specific provisions for pet daycare for only daytime boarding of pets, nor specific provisions for many other pet services outside of grooming. This attempts to correct that against there's a balance of values depending on how much you like other people's animals around you. But pet daycare is a legitimate use. Pet boarding is a legitimate use, I think, you know, some, as opposed to dog kennels. But veterinary services, otherwise, these would have been. The principle I tend to go by when it comes to zoning is that if it's not explicitly included, then it's implicitly excluded. We try to be as inclusive lawful uses as we can until we discuss and find that there's legitimate public health, safety nuisance reasons to exclude them. I don't see a reason personally to exclude all of these uses only to the economic development corridor in the floodplain area, especially since they've legitimately existed elsewhere before. However, let it be known that I personally am also not the biggest pet lover in the world, so I'm trying to exercise your values and not my own.
Does anybody have any thoughts on?
I agree. A couple years ago, I suggested, because we had a problem where we were allowing a veterinary hospital, but not a daycare. And it was essentially two blocks apart. So, yeah, I'm supportive of this.
If you have any questions about the details, as always, individually, send them to me. I can try to answer questions, but if there's anything around the edges, please just tear it apart. Let's continue this. Let's continue the discussion.
Right on. Thanks, Peter.
So one, two, and three supportive, as yet not the middle until we have another public discussion.
Right on.
Okay.
New business, discussion, motion planning commission and housing action plan.
So as Jason spoke about and included in the letters, there are certain aspects that the planning commission would like counsel to just give them their blessing for the planning commission to work on. Those items are getting detailed in that letter that was read. I don't know if Jason wants to say anymore. Nope, shaking his head. So they would like to help assist the city in managing key stakeholders, dedicate planning staff and MPC volunteer capacity to help managing the partnership. So I think that at this point, and Jason, please correct me if I'm wrong, the planning commission is really just looking for counsel to give the go-ahead. Yes, we support what you're doing. Please come to us with any suggestions, ideas that you would like.
I've advised the planning commission that, as I said before, strictly speaking, the planning agency does things at the request of the governing body. So they are asking you to request of them to be involved and give them the direction in their involvement in the housing plan.
Can, do you know offhand, like roughly, just the increase homeownership rates by forty percent? Like how many?
That's two forty percent.
It was, Miss, yes. So and I did look up what the difference would be in an increase two forty percent versus of forty percent.
Yeah.
You can read this chat GPT when it came up.
About six hundred and more.
No, it's it's about a hundred and ten more if we raise it by forty percent versus two forty percent. Two forty percent is four hundred and forty-eight households or something like that. So that that's for folks. Talking about increasing homeownership. So the homeownership rate in Meadville is at thirty percent, meaning thirty percent of households are owner occupied. And one of the goals in the housing action plan is to increase that to support people in owning their homes. So four hundred and eighty-two, according to Chat GPT's map.
Thanks. I was just like, wow.
To speak for myself, and I think as Planning Commission Chair, Mr. Jason Ramsey implied, we all acknowledge that this is an unfunded local plan. We have lots of aspirations for what we'd like to see and how the direction that we'd like to have the numbers move. And we're still early days yet. I think I call this our preparatory phase to get our heads around and our abilities straight to what we can't, like our limits of how we can intervene in housing. My, I mean, does that sound accurate? Yeah.
And I I'll just add to that, that I have suggested to Peter and Rena as the liaison to the redevelopment authority to have both entities focus on the identified redevelopment areas and how those can be developed with things, including additional housing in those two areas. So that has been my suggestion.
So, right now, I'm sorry, go ahead. So we've taken some bait, didn't mean to via housing plan update. May as well be, taking some baby steps to this, including amending the zoning ordinance to reduce the size requirements of housing and for the required lots. So it makes it easier to build modest housing that, if the market is willing to supply it, would provide cheaper housing. To what degree the city itself can intervene to actually provide housing or to move the markets beyond our regulatory abilities? Again, just to say it out loud, is very limited. One of the limitations that we and the redevelopment authority have, but I think which we've tried to address by identifying and specifically looking at redevelopment areas, where they do have more authority to intervene, is site control and making undeveloped land or houses that are unoccupied available. That's still difficult when we don't have the money for site control or for acquisition or for abatement of blighted properties and everything else. So however, I think the planning commission has identified that there's still steps that we can do to at least try to make these more attractive and say that this these are the steps that we are taking and to be more proactive in engaging with the neighbors who do have control of the sites in these in these areas. For myself, I'd like to, I'm just throwing this out here without preparation. I don't know where or if the citywide or countywide land bank idea is worth bringing up specifically as one of those tools to just have in the toolbox. I don't know particularly where that's live, but it's in their request. That's another outstanding question to settle, given that there's leadership and priority changes at the county level since the last time that the discussion might have had come up. So.
Yeah, so I'm I'm supportive of the planning commission stepping up. Frankly, so the housing action plan, we passed it a few years ago and we have not. I mean, we've done some regulatory, some some changes to zoning, but there's a lot that's in there that we haven't done. There's a lot of room for opportunity. And to your point, Peter, like, I think one of the things that you did mention is the convening power of the city that is, I, is like most of what the housing action plan is like predicated on. I think it is very realistic that like the city doesn't maybe have a ton of money and resources, but like can bring people together to kind of like get people like growing in the same direction. We could have done it sooner. It's, I'm glad that the planning commission wants to step up to move us forward on those goals. I'm a little confused. I hear what you said. I'm confused about why they had to send a letter to us because I think we adopted a housing action plan like two years ago. And so to me, that signals to all of our authorities and commissions, like, this is a priority of the city. Go and run with it, like do what you can to contribute to this thing. I think what I'm, whatever, I'm not standing in the way of anything. Please, if they want to bring added capacity, that's great. I'm just like procedurally, I'm kind of like wondering why we would stop them from working to enact a plan that we've already adopted. That is just my own questions. But I'm glad that they want to take some some leadership and and move this forward because, yeah, housing is a has been a priority of this city council administration, continues to be, and is not getting any easier or better, so.
So to a nuance to that, and I'll take either credit or blame for it. For instance, in that item about pursuing a citywide or countywide land bank, if the planning commission is to be involved in that, that also means the planning commission would be going around city council to communicate with the county on policy decisions that would affect the city, perhaps without your knowledge, the same that the planning commission could be going to the redevelopment authority without your specific direction to talk to them about enacting specific city policy that you might not agree with. So it's communication, open channels.
That's fine. That's a perspective that you have, and I appreciate it. I have a different one, but thank you. And that is, that's, I appreciate that.
I appreciate it because now I know where the priority lies and that there are a group of people that are going to be, you know, taking the time to to think about this thing as some of us have put it maybe on the back burner. So I appreciate the letter. It was great. Anything, Jim or?
No, not this one.
Okay. Resolution.
Sure, can I make a motion that we authorize the planning commission to, right? It's on here.
It's discussion motion, yeah.
Can I make a motion that we authorize the planning commission to work on the housing action plan that we found a few years ago?
Yep.
What is the the thing? What's the motion that I made?
Yeah, I said discussion motion, so.
Are we in that discussion, Rena?
We we just got done with the discussion, so you can.
Oh, no, I'm saying we didn't. There's not a motion on the floor.
No.
You were in the motion.
There you go. I second that.
Okay.
And the motion.
Discussion.
Watch out.
Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kind, Kinder.
Aye. All right, resolution authorized signatures, Massa line of credit note.
So that is the that is the item that we amended the agenda to be an approval of the ordinance, guaranteeing the Pennvest notes of Massa.
So that gets ready.
Can I have a motion?
I will so move.
Second.
Discussion.
So the area sewer authority, Massa, is has been awarded over five million dollars to begin a, what they're calling a collections upgrade. They are going to begin in 2026. They are looking at the Race Street lift station, and they're going to be doing two force stain replacements and two gravity lines. Biggest upgrade that probably folks will see is the sewer line that runs on North Street. That has been needed repaired for a very long time. So they wanted to do the Race Street pump station years ago, but was just never able to get the funding for it. We are looking to close on the loans in January of 2026. And to do that, Massa needs a grantor interim financing if needed. So that is where the city steps in in their percentage.
So the city is guaranteeing sixty-eight point seven five percent of the total loan loans. It's two different loans of five million, forty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That sixty-eight point seven five percent is calculated by Pennvest as being the percentage of service that is offered to the city by the authority overall. The guarantee should be what's known as excluded debt, meaning that the revenues that are generated as a result of the operation of the sewer authority are sufficient to cover the costs of the loan. And so we will not have to be relying upon the taxing power of the city in the event that the guarantee was called upon. However, because of the process that we use under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, the law does require that we adopt this ordinance and the guarantee and approval of the guarantees and then have that recorded in our debt obligations in the Local Government Unit Debt Act report that the Department of Community and Economic Development maintains.
You said ordinance, this says, I said resolution.
So the agenda does say a resolution. However, it is in fact an ordinance. It was advertised as such. The advertisement ran yesterday, Friday, and it ran Friday in the Meadville Tribune. And then there's a second advertisement that is required by the Local Government Unit Debt Act that will run tomorrow. So as this is an ordinance of the Local Government Unit Debt Act, it does not necessarily, it does not have to follow the procedures that are contained within the third-class city code, and therefore it may only run once.
So originally you have to pass it once.
Only have to pass it once.
Right.
The percentage is at sixty-eight and then a thirty-one percent for for Westmead. Does that, is that like based on population? Or is it like a usage they, I'm just curious.
I believe it's usage.
Usage, okay. And then Vernon doesn't use Meadville. I I didn't like it.
They have their own.
They have their own. Oh, gosh, I really thought they were tapped in there. Okay, thanks.
There's one one difference in the in the draft ordinance that was provided to you. We didn't receive the information for paragraph five until just prior to the meeting. And that is that the estimated completion date of the project is June of 2027. So there's a blank there at the end of paragraph five. And that engineer just gave us that date today. So June of 2027 is when this project is anticipated being completed. That is important for the ordinance as when we start amortizing the principal interest of the note is three months after the first, after the project completion. So we need to identify when the anticipated project completion will be.
Any other questions? I'm, I'm, there's no way I'm going to fully ever understand all of this, so I shouldn't even ask any questions. But but so it's put in front of us, I'm seeing line of credit in in some.
That was inaccurate. The line of credit on the ordinance is not a line of credit. We're not able to get into the lines of credit. So what's happening is that Pennvest is the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Trust that is authority that is put together by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They obtain either federal dollars or state dollars that they then flow through to entities such as Massa. As part of those agreements between Pennvest and Massa, they're requiring the guarantee of the taxing body that had created Massa. Here we have two different taxing bodies. So we are guaranteeing their notes, which for federal tax purposes have to be referred to as bonds, but not as bonds as you would typically think of as trading bonds on the market. But they are, we're guaranteeing the debt instrument that Massa is getting into with Pennvest. And that is so Pennvest is able then to have that guarantee to pay off their debt instruments up to either the federal state dollars that they had received this money from that funded the debt. So I'm sure that made it clear.
Well, surprisingly. You can believe it, too. I actually did. But so so we're we're the backup.
We're backed up.
There's no money that's being expended from the city.
We're the insurance policy.
We're we're the insurance policy.
And so the.
That's going to allow sewer systems to be upgraded.
The extent of the financial obligation for us, except if Massa defaults on their debt, which there's no reason to anticipate that they would, the extent of what we have to do is reserve one year's worth of debt service on our budget as as part of this. So when you see your budget put forth and you see the potential expenditures, there will be one of the sub-sub-sub-line items is going to be the reserve for the purpose of paying this for one year, which we're obligated to budget for, but we're not obligated to spend. There has to be some money set aside in order to fund that reserve.
And to account for.
And that's the same way that we did when we did this in twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three for Massa for a different project. It's the same same proposal, same process that we've gone through.
Thank you for helping me. Any other questions? No, that's good. All right. Roll call.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, determining to incur lease rental debt evidenced by the two guaranteed revenue bonds, bond seven-seven-one-four-zero in the maximum principal amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and bond seven-one-five-zero-zero in the amount of three million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, the Pennvest bonds, to be authorized and issued by the Meadville Area Sewer Authority in connection with the design and engineering, construction, alterations, and improvements to the sewage collection system and new maintenance facility located in and about the city of Meadville and paying for the cost of issuance therefor, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city of Meadville to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including guarantee agreements between the city of Meadville as guarantor and the Meadville Area Sewer Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, through which the city of Meadville shall guarantee sixty-eight point seven five percent of the amount of the Pennvest bonds in a maximum guarantee amount of three million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, approving the form maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement and pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city of Meadville in support thereof, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations and appointing a sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinance ordinances or parts of ordinances.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items.
We have none staying there.
That, you did wonderful, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
All right, council member statements. Jim.
Thank you. Just a couple things. Since we won't see you until November, happy trick or treat and enjoy the Halloween parade. Let's be thankful for the nice weather that we have so far. Let's be thankful for the nice weather that we have so far. Little public service announcement, some people, I assume juveniles, have been taking political signs and putting them on other people's properties. It's a violation of the law, it's rude, crude, and ignorant, but people should be good citizens and refrain from that kind of behavior. You never know if someone has a camera that's going to catch the lightness of the people who are causing the problem. And my last two things, I periodically mention them. We really need to have an automatic door opener on the front and a door that is wide enough to accommodate motorized chairs. That also implies inner doors, which are operable so people can get through. And in here, we have terrible acoustics, I have seen a number of people in the audience struggling to hear what is being said, so if there is some kind of a sound system that we can have that is not going to reverberate and is going to give people the opportunity to hear and participate, because after all, if you can't hear what's going on, you're really not being included in the, in the process. That's all for now.
Thanks, Jim. Gretchen?
Yeah, the parade is this weekend, the Halloween parade, Kevin, right? Shout out to Armstrong for covering that, at six-thirty PM. Trick or treat is next Thursday from six to seven-thirty. I was at Council of Governments meeting, the county has a survey out, if you're all interested in recreation and having a countywide plan for recreation and, and how that should look in the future, the meeting, actually, they had it active aging tonight at six, unfortunately, but there is that survey, so I encourage everyone to take time to fill that out. It could be just a really cool thing for the future of the county. Peter, thank you for keeping the communication going through, through all of the authorities and the, the ABCs basically, and for planning, because it's, this is huge to get through all this stuff and well, kind of creep through it, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Gretchen.
Yeah, thanks, folks, for coming tonight, appreciate folks being here, being part of the process, as Jim mentioned, thanks to staff, as always, for all the work you do all the time. Thanks to some of staff and, and staff at the Market House for the Fall Fest, I was out of town, but I heard really great things about the Fall Festival that happened earlier this month, so thanks for putting that on, a lovely thing for people, families in, in Meadville to do, a free thing for people in Meadville to do. Similarly, the parade is an exciting time, and it's put on by other volunteers, too. I think Casey's is now Epic Emerging Professionals in Crawford County, so shout out to Epic for organizing the Halloween Parade, a beloved institution, and look forward to seeing folks there. The green space is coming along, like really wonderfully, it's, it's looking really great, big trees and the, the timber-framed pergola that's been constructed by volunteers and is part of this national effort gets erected this, this weekend, that'll go up, I think, this, this weekend that goes up, which is neat to see, this kind of hand, handcrafted piece that'll be downtown in this beautiful space for us all to share. And other things going downtown, four trees, working so hard for four frackin' trees, that'll be part of a pilot program on Chestnut Street to put trees in planters and see how they do and if they fare any better than planting them in the ground where they're kind of contending with salt and some of the other damage that happens to, to trees in our downtown, so, yeah, we're doing that, because, because Meadville's doing good, and, and shout out to the Sheetree Commission, to Alice, and to April for working to, to get that sorted out, but that'll be a nice program pilot as well, and, and the MCRC, the Community Revitalization Corporation will have a hand in, in a little bit of that, too, so that will, will be a nice thing to kind of see, see what's possible in downtown, so.
Thanks, Autumn. First, I'm going to touch on something that Jim was saying, it is, it is difficult to hear in here, and I think that that is why it's so very important, we abide by the rules of the, of the room and of council, if you have something to say, we stand up and we, we say it, it's very hard if you're speaking back in the back to each other or shouting out, so being respectful and going by the rules of this chamber is, I think, very, very important here, no matter how funny we think we are, and I think that Meadville's very busy coming up, right? We are going to have a wonderful time in this season, right? And with the parade and trick or treat, I want everybody to be safe and enjoy their time, but we do need to remember that there are some really hard times coming up, right? We see some of the things that are happening, and people may not be able to eat next month. What I saw was a call from the Center for Family Services, already saying that they don't have a lot of food, and we need to come together as a community and make sure that our neighbors are taken care of and they're fed, and that may mean a little bit less for each of us, but, you know, it's so very important that Meadville has a shared vision where we all make it. So we will be accepting food at a food drive, at the fire department, at the police station, and in the building here, so that we can fill up those shelves for the Center for Family Services, again, all the churches also, they give out bags of food, and we just want to make sure that, that people are fed, right? And we understand the hardship that is going to happen, especially next month if people don't get their food stamps, right? They're going to get less money and food is going to be scarce, so I want us to keep our neighbors in mind, I want us to remember that we care about each other, and we want everybody to, to do well here, and give if you can, help if you can, right? Be a, a good human if, if we can, right? And with that, I am going to call for a motion to a chair.
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.